Are we all set? All right, I would like to call this special meeting of the Town of Dayton's Commission on Disability. The date is four, four twenty-four. It is five P M. We are currently at fine time, ten fifty-nine Somerset Avenue, Dayton. This is a Zoom in-person meeting and we are being recorded. Can I have us have a call to order at this time?
Uh, Kevin Smith is present.
Jonathan Gale, present.
Christina Di Oliveira, Zoom.
All right, thank you. And at this time, can I have us do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm gonna do the first member introductions. So I'm gonna go to new business. We're gonna review, discuss act on the Commission on Disability Town Bylaw. Um, do you wanna?
Yeah. Christina, did you get a chance to kind of look over the two versions that I extended?
I did, yes.
Of course. It was, so I cleaned up. There was a little redundancy there, so like under chapter one, um, establishment. Um, I just kind of took out the, what it said as under commissions because that was again noted in, um, the title and purpose. Oh, I'm sorry, powers and duties. So I just, I took that out. And then just cleaned up some of the language. The biggest language change, there was two, two things. One regarding our membership, because we had it as up to nine, which affected our quorum. So we would have needed four, um, to have meetings. And so I reduced the, um, the membership down to five members. That way, the quorum would then be three. And then I cleaned up the terms. The term, the terms were a little funky. So I made it kind of more uniform with what we do for other committees and commissions in town. So it's like one mem- one member has a one-year term. Two members have two-year terms, two members have three-year terms. And then after that, everybody goes to a three-year term. So I just cleaned up that language so it's more uniform for what we do throughout the town. And then I added in a note. So where I came up with all this too, just so everybody knows, is, um, I looked at a few other towns, um, Commission on Disability Bylaws just to, uh, kind of piggyback off of some of the things they do. And now I can't find it. If you know anything about the, hold on. What was that, when you highlighted?
Uh, receives gifts of property.
That was under what, chapter three?
Um, yes.
Yeah, so I added in a line under, um, in chapter three, powers and duties, that receives gifts of property, both real and personal, in the name of the town, subject to the approval of the select board. I'm gonna change that to board.
Right when you said that, it's not, right?
Board of selection. And then such as gifts, uh, are to be managed and controlled by the commission. Because we technically, um, without that in there, we couldn't, uh, receive gifts. Not so, well, we could receive gifts, but it would be difficult for us, you know, people are wise.
So are gifts also like, um, like donations?
Yeah, it could be money.
So where, where would those go once accepted, like?
It would get earmarked by the town accountant.
Okay. Okay.
She'll usually create a special account that can go to that.
That's, yeah.
It comes separate.
Okay.
Um, in that case, so like if we did stop receiving money, like I, you know, we would have to probably also piggyback and add or evolve any found, so.
That's, yeah, those are what I was wondering.
But like that's like one of those things, let's cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah.
That's easy enough to add in. So the idea behind all this and change in the language was, um, with, um, annual town meeting coming up, our warrants, the warrants close on the tenth of the month. So what we'd like to do is, um, have these updated bylaws presented at annual town meeting. That way, we can adjust that forum. That way, we can operate a little bit more freely, you know, depending on what our membership looks like at the time. And I, I almost make the recommendation that we would strike the bylaw in its entirety and replace it with this language instead of like.
Yeah, piecemeal, yeah, no, I agree.
Piecing it.
The only thing to think about is that when this bylaw is approved by town meeting, it still had to be sent to the A G's office and reviewed. So if you make changes, this will still need to be sent to the A G's office to review.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the question that then becomes, do you still, based on that? I mean, they're gonna review it either way. But do you still wanna think about striking the entire bylaw?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, because it would be so difficult.
They're gonna review it either way, right?
That was, they're gonna review it either way, yes.
I think the quorum thing is a big thing. Like, I know that we would like reaching for the stars in regards to members.
Yeah.
But if we looked historically, we keep dropping down to almost three, um, every time. So at least this will still allow us to.
Yeah, and I think the original recommendation, when I was in there originally, that was based on the M O D recommendation.
Okay.
At that point, for a new C O D, because you don't know how many members you're gonna get or not.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why that basis, they theoretically said you could have put up to thirteen, but that just seemed absolutely ridiculous.
Well, that I guess is absolutely ridiculous.
But it does, and it's, and, and I think unfortunately, this is also a pattern for other committees and commissions in town, where it's harder to get people to volunteer. So this may become a pattern that has to be kind of across the board in many cases too. But I don't, I mean, three would make sense to have for quorum.
It just, yeah, it just makes it so much easier. Well, and look, here's the thing too, is I think five is like a good number. It's not too big, it's not too small. But also too, it's like you're just gonna let it be known that if people want to participate, we have public input. So it's like, although you may not be a voting member, if you wanna be heard, we're here to hear you, you know? It doesn't, you don't have to technically be a member to, um, you know, play drag ones.
The Solomons committee kind of did that. They had too many people that applied and then they just had a gentleman that was coming. I don't really know what they were calling him, but he kind of just put in public input.
Yeah.
Um, and he still got to be involved and stuff like that.
Right.
And I think the other side of it is this is an opportunity to be able to say to whoever the five members are, you know, in the end, if you're, if you're gonna be part of this, it's a, it is a commitment that we're asking people to make, not just to show up and not have a voice. There are only five of us, kind of thing. So if you're really not gonna commit, please don't, don't apply.
Christina, do you have any concerns or any input?
Um, would it be, um, I don't know if this makes sense or not, but would it make, like, to do, instead of saying three people for quorum, can you say a percentage instead of the total membership? Or do you have to say three or four or five?
I think you have to say three, because it has to be a majority.
Okay.
Even if you did it as a percentage, I think it would, it would still constitute three.
It'd still be three, yeah.
Okay.
I think that would be effective if, if like you had that bigger number. That would be probably a little bit.
If you had a board, if you had a board that had an even number, then you'd have to say fifty, fifty point oh one percent, which still means you'd have to have an odd number to get the same result.
That was a good question.
So under powers and duties, which is chapter three, and then D, working cooperation with the departments and agencies of the Town of Dayton to bring maximum participation, um, of people with disabilities. I think, I, I wanna add in the language that specifically, we work with the A D A coordinator, because then it kind of provides some continuity with the job, his job description. Just to kind of cover us in the bylaw too.
You, you could add including or inclusive of the A D A coordinator, because that language was part of the state's simply.
Same language?
That language there.
No, what did you say?
Inclusive of.
You could add inclusive of.
Give me a definition.
The, you, inclusive of, including, not, not, not limited to.
Included in there.
Okay, that's, it may be, maybe it is limited to.
You could do nothing.
Yes. Yeah. I was gonna go specifically. Oh, yeah, yeah, I get what you're saying, that does make sense. Inclusive. Because the whole process, so when Jonathan prior, um, like a few months ago, when Jonathan was a member, the whole purpose of, of having him not be a member was so that we could provide, provide more direction in his, you know, job description.
And this allows me, Christine, also to take, as Kevin said, not only to take direction from you guys, but to report back to you on other things that I'm doing within the town that may not directly involve C O D, what C O D needs to be aware of. Do you have any thoughts on that, Christina, or?
Um, no, I think it's, it's, um, to say including or inclusive of, but not limited to, makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think other than that, it was pretty much, pretty close to what we originally had. Most of it was just language cleanup, removing the redundancy, then just adding those couple things, so.
Right.
Let me know.
Are we at the point that someone will, willing to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we recommend the C O D bylaw change for annual town meeting.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And can I get a vote or any discussion, sorry?
Do you want, do you want to indicate first for discussion whether you're indicating to change part of the bylaw or the entire bylaw, so that it's on record?
Yeah, well, let me go back one. I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my motion. And then I'm gonna make a motion that this, that we recommend striking out the current C O D bylaw in its entirety and replacing it with the amended bylaw before.
My second. My second.
And then a vote?
Christina, aye.
All right, thank you. Give Kevin a minute to catch up. Just can't get away from, I'm not gonna take a minute standing.
Yeah, I'll say your goodness.
Um, okay, so we're gonna move on to old business. We're gonna discuss the K M A report. Does anyone have anything to do with regards to that, anything they'd like to discuss?
The only thing that I have, because it was the first time that I actually witnessed it in person, right? Was when we were doing the Easter project.
Mm-hmm.
So we did the inclusive, you know, accessible in the voluntary area in the lower level of town hall. And I happened to have Layla with me, and I've never, ever, ever properly looked through that entrance. And I know it's noted in the end of the threshold.
Yeah.
He is the wrong height.
Yep.
And like, I've never walked over it a hundred times, I've never paid attention until I pushed that wheelchair over. And I was like, like this, like it's like one of those things, if you don't think it's that bad, until you push a wheelchair over.
What could be done to, like, we need that?
They can replace it with like a zero threshold.
Okay.
And I think that was like one of the lower dollar of the height, because it was like one of the five hundred dollar height.
Yeah. I think that's important too, right now with the library getting down there.
Well, that too, and even think like with all the construction going on, when the upper level is closed, that entrance, and people have to go downstairs to conduct their business.
Yeah.
It could be, you know, more of an issue than it would be on our normal day-to-day.
That is one of the things that is, I know we're supposed to have a meeting with Mike and probably Jim, um, and probably Tom as well to talk about a few things for the town hall from this, the new striking from where the handicaps, the broncs are gonna be, to a couple of other things as well. And that's on my head list, it's something that I want them to address. And determine whether we know which plan, where the case is gonna come from, or what the allocation is gonna be, and how it's gonna be done, if it can be done. I don't know if Tom's guys can do it, or Jim wants to do it, or how they wanna do it, or if they wanna take it up completely, replace it, or whatever the piece for it. But whichever it is, I agree it needs to be done. It's also because they use other things, and voting, they're voting.
Yeah.
Things like that as well, and just gonna go back to using that with the meetings again, this library next year is gone. So it's, it's imperative that it be done.
Yeah, it is on the, that, the report of progress that I did.
Yeah.
So, and it was one of the items that I have that's listed under a thousand dollars.
Okay.
They said the landing in the threshold. I don't think, and Jonathan would have to look at it. I don't think the landing itself is that far off.
No, it's not.
Or really an issue, it's more the threshold, and I believe the threshold is a five hundred bucks.
Is it only that entrance, or is it also the entrance where they're using, like, the, the one where it's?
I have to look at that. I don't know if that was even cited.
Do you mean that back entrance?
The side door to the children's library.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, that, nothing was even discussed with that yet, because at one point, they had thought when they were gonna potentially redo cable down there, they had talked about redoing that as well. So, um, I don't know what this, what the latest is gonna be for cable going back down there or not, after the library moves out, or how that's gonna go.
Yeah, cable is gonna, I guess they have a whole studio down there.
Yeah, so that, I think that's, the plan is to progress it that way.
So can, should we, I guess, just in, to progress in this, because it is our, I guess, our duty to be a recommending committee. When something like that comes up, where it's like a specific aspect, should we have a motion to like send the recommendation of the building commissioner?
You, what you would do, you would, you would, and because this is an A D A issue, you would make a motion to ask the A D A coordinator to look into it and report back to you at the next meeting. Then I would look into it, speak to Mike, Jim, whoever is necessary to speak to, and report back, let you know who I spoke to, what the outcome is.
Oh, yeah, that sounds like it was, and it's gonna get done in three years. Why don't I, why, why wouldn't you make a motion that, like, just so, so correspondence has been said?
You can.
If that's the way I think of it.
You can.
All right, I'm gonna, hold on, I'm gonna try to think of how I wanna write this.
Just keep the coordinator included.
Yeah, absolutely. So I wanna, I'm gonna make a motion that we notify the town administrator, building commissioner, and the A D A coordinator of the threshold issue at the level of the town hall.
Can I get a second?
My second.
And any discussion?
Christina Di Oliveira, aye.
Kevin Smith, aye.
Christina, can you hear us well? Because there's someone vacuuming, I didn't know if it's hard for you.
It's a little hard, but I'm, I'm managing, so.
Okay, sorry.
I, beyond that, I didn't spend a ton of time, like, revisiting the K M A report myself.
Yeah, no, I haven't either.
So who will be best, best to be, I mean, if you're the chair, would you send out a new mail to myself and Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you send me that document again?
Yeah.
I don't know where it is. I'm sure I have it, but finding it, you know. All right, so is there any more discussion on the K M A report? I think it's good that we have like an action item, um.
The only thing that I would add to it, because in general, it talks about the town's policies and procedures as well, and I did speak briefly to Karen the other day about setting a time to sit down with her next week and begin to determine which ones we wanna look at first, and really do a deeper dive. It's more gonna be about policies and the, starting with the wording of policies and procedures, to make sure they're all currently up to date. With anything that relates to a disability, not all of them do, but to make sure that the language is still there, to make sure that the language is also there for the different communities and commissions for inclusiveness on their announcements. So we're gonna start with that. But I just wanted to let you know that that's, the plan is to get going on that in the next week or two.
Right. I'm hearing nothing, Fred. I'm gonna move over to member reports. Does anyone have anything to report on? Christina, do you have anything to report on?
Yes, I think I sent, I sent you an email with the CPAC's upcoming, um, workshops. We had our workshop on dyslexia and coming up in April, we're having a workshop with, um, a woman from Community Autism Resources, um, for autism resources for people. And that's in April, and it's, I think it's in person, it's in Somerset, at the Somerset Public Library.
Yes, thank you. I just had something real quick, um, it's for our next meeting. We had, our, our last meeting, Tim Toulon had mentioned, um, wanting to help businesses, um, hire, um, and have more diverse hiring. Um, so I had reached out to Cooperative Productions Co-op in town and reached out to the program manager of, um, one of their day programs, the day program where they go out to the community and they work. Um, for her to come in and kind of speak to that, um, she couldn't make it this meeting, but she's planning on making it to our next meeting. So, uh, I may be wrong, but this is the first time we had a speaker actually come and speak to us.
Yeah.
So I'm really, I'm really excited about it. I hope she comes, because she was a little freaked out about that she'd be on Zoom and be recorded and stuff. But I was like, literally, there's four of us. Like, it doesn't get any more low-key. So I'm hoping she'll come. Um, I'll touch base with her again in a couple of weeks. And then she'll come and she'll speak on that. And that might give us another, like, action item to work on, um, depending on what she tells us. Um, maybe we can partner with the, is it the D I C, the Dayton?
D I, that D I C, yes.
Yeah, um, so it would, that would be nice. Um, Kevin, did you have any?
Um, so to piggyback off of that, I got the opportunity to meet with some of the staff and clients of Co-op earlier in the week, last week. They were looking for ways that they could get involved more on a volunteer basis, or just activity-based. So I talked to them from my Parks and Rec position. I sent them an invite to participate in working at the garden, which like they were thrilled about, um, waiting to coordinate with some of the staff on how we could really put that together. And then yesterday, I talked to Connor, who is the transition program instructor over at the high school. Same thing, was looking for ways to get his students involved in, in community activities. And also some movement towards employment too, but there's not a whole lot they can do there. But I kind of extended him the same invitation that they wanted to participate in the garden. Then he said they only have two students this year, but going into next school year, he's gonna have eleven. So he's like constantly looking for ways to get them involved. I know they do it a lot at, um, Rehoboth comes on aging, and he's talked to our council on aging about once he has a better class, getting that involved here. And then also hopefully get that involved with the garden as well. So the garden seems to be really growing into what we wanted it to.
Yeah.
It's a kind of community-wide, all kinds of different ages and abilities, so. Something like that.
I am gonna be, um, I think if, if anybody was at the manager's meeting yesterday, I mentioned that I'm part of a, a task force through a servant at this point for roads and safe streets, and that includes sidewalks. And I'm on it, they asked me to be on it, because they're looking for input from people with disability, disability coordinators. And part of that process, this is where C O D comes in, once we start putting together the process with engineers, designers, things like that, is to look at the future of road systems in towns like ours, sidewalks, crosswalks, intersections, signage, things like that. But in this case, with a focus on disability, at some point, we're gonna wanna consider trying to put together some focus groups of people with different types of disability. And I will be reaching out to C O D to ask the C O D to be part of that and to help get the word out, so that we can get a focus group together of six, eight, or ten people in the town with different disabilities to talk about the difficulties with streets and sidewalks, with intersection, with the crosswalks, et cetera, et cetera. Anything road and street and sidewalk related. So that probably won't happen, that part of it, until early fall. But I just wanna put that on everyone's radar, because I will be reaching out at the beginning of the summer to start to ask you to, to help organize that.
Yeah, and if you're looking for, um, I had mentioned this to Kevin today, like people, like is this gonna be like a board or a committee, or it's a subcommittee, what is it? This, this thing that you're on, that you're looking for other posts?
We'll be looking for, we'll be looking, the task force is gonna, is gonna be made up of myself and probably twelve to fourteen other people, including engineers and designers. It's a one point nine million dollar grant that's sort of got to do this process over the next eighteen months or so. So it'll be bringing in engineers, designers, but as a result of this, part of what we wanna do is work with different towns and put together subcommittees or focus groups within towns. So we wanna hear from residents within the servant scope of what's working in their town, what's not working, what would lead to improvements for people with disability.
It'd be great to reach out to places like Co-op or other, I don't know what other organizations are within the town that have folks that are looking for like, to make sure that the, the hy, the sidewalks and stuff, like, they have a concern, like, they might be someone to reach out for that.
I don't, I don't know either, but this would be an opportunity for C O D to help get members of the public involved. You know, wheelchairs users, for example. Others that have disabilities, seniors that use walkers, things like that. It would be an opportunity for C O D just to really help put this together, at least. Publicize it and perhaps even source it, when we all get together.
We gotta make sure we get Vicky Piazza involved in that.
Yeah, that would, yeah.
Yeah.
Show me interested, I'll work with that.
Okay, okay, so just, just so it's on your radar, I'll let you know. We haven't even had our first meeting yet, we're trying to schedule a first meeting for sometime later this month. But that's in my pre-discussions, that's part of what we stopped at. Another thing is that I did get an email from the police chief the other day who wants to begin to have a conversation to talk about the lights down here and the intersection. And basically can improve the lights and put some devices on there, some.
Oh, like walk?
Walk, like this, walk and sound as well, so if we can look at getting any grants, things like that. So I'm probably gonna reach out to the chief tomorrow, I couldn't get back to him today, so that we can begin that conversation, so that we can improve the lights there. And then also potentially identify other, if there are other places in town where the chief and the police department may feel lights are necessary in intersection, whether they're blinker lights, full lights, or blinkers with a button, so that you can have a walk, don't walk sign, you could have a chirp, things like that.
Is that what you're talking about for that intersection, having a button for walking? That would be great, because they're gonna, they wanna put that path over by first lady,
Right, yes.
and that was one of my concerns, and like, we have a light, we have nothing that people wanna be.
No.
Aaron, I see some, some, somebody walking there every day.
That's a nice, yeah, it is, it is. So the chief just reached out to me the other day.
Oh, good.
So we're gonna start talking about that process. I hope I can get to him tomorrow. And again, uh, if you wanna keep it on the agenda for all business, like, I'll give you information under our next meeting.
Can I just add in one thing in the report, just please?
Yeah.
So I, I spoke to Mike about this, more in his capacity as a town administrator, not so much as a member, with the patio, however, whenever I asked about looking at the plans for the patio.
Oh, yeah.
So I talked to him, because again, we're trying to find our way and figure out what our, you know, duties and, and hours or equal, or hours are. And like even that, even though it kind of had already been decided and it was moving, I think whenever something like that pops up, it's important that we at least take a look at it and make a recommendation on it. Um, and not so much like, I don't wanna slow down a project, like that's the last thing I wanna do, but just an extra set of eyes to think of things that, you know, the people building it or the people who design it may not have as important. And like I told him, Mike, as he's like, oh, well, I don't know potentially something the C O D should be doing. I said, I would argue that it is. I said, because if we're handling the recommendations in the K M A report, being able to review things as they're being built, talk to the A D A coordinator about it, and then make recommendations to the building commissioner, highway department, or T A, prevents us from having additional items added to the K M A report.
Yeah.
So it's like, use us as that resource, that when a project comes up, you know, let's look at it. You know, I don't think this, there's nothing that's gonna have a lengthy review. And then we can just kind of say our piece, you know, because it might be just little, every, like I said, Dan, every, nobody's perfect, we all like overlook things or forget little things. So it's like the more eyes on it, the better. It's like, it's not to, you know, step on anybody's toes or anything like that, it's just.
Well, I'm probably gonna step on toes a little bit, and only in the sense that when I knew they were gonna be thinking about doing that, I did ask to be involved to make sure that they met the requirements for benches, for leveling and so forth. And I was told that I would be, and I never heard anything back. This ramp, that's the temporary ramp out front here, I was never told they were gonna put that temporary ramp in, which is non-compliant. Having said that, if it was only for a short amount of time, or gonna be for a short amount of time, that's fine. But no one's indicated when there's gonna be a new ramp in here. And in the meantime, it's non-compliant going on for a month now. So that's an example of. So that's an example of the lack of communication, of the lack of partnership, if you will. Um, I know, I I heard through the grapevine that when the issue came up for the patio, um, people were told that the the A D A coordinator was aware of it and working with the building commissioner. I will tell you honestly, that never occurred. I'm just being frank. I was never contacted. So just, you know, full disclosure, as they say.
Can we just go back to the ramp um real quick? Cause I just wanna have like a quick understanding of what makes it non-compliant.
Sure. It's first of all, it's too thin.
Okay.
Second of all, the surfacing of it, if there were ice or snow.
Yeah.
So it's a combination of both.
Okay.
So that ramp doesn't accommodate many wheelchairs or certain types of wheelchairs, for example. And then the angle at the top here for the turning radius. So it should, they could have rented a ramp temporarily. That would have fit the regulated requirements.
Where did this ramp come from? Is this piece meal or something like that?
I haven't been knowing. No, it's probably, we have some surplus equipment. Some of it comes from like um other lines, gloves, you know.
Yeah.
Wait, cause why does this ramp exist if it's not within?
I can't answer that very well.
I think it was like a quick, quick fix.
It was a quick temporary, let's put it in here while we're taking the other one out.
Okay.
And that would be fine if it was only for a couple of weeks or a month. And as I've said to others, if I knew it was gonna be longer, I would have recommended leasing or renting the appropriate ramp for the short term or to cover the town's for safety purposes, I would have written to the architectural access board, nest for temporary variance.
Mm hmm.
Which is, you can do either or. So it's just, it's the principle of communication, I guess, is what I'm saying. And in order for you guys to to do your work and for me to report back and for everything to go the way it's supposed to, I think it's just imperative that people communicate with one another. That's all.
Oh, yes. Okay. So I'm going to, Christina, you all set with reporting on anything?
Yeah, I'll set.
All right. Um, so we're gonna move on to review and approve the minutes from three seven, two thousand twenty four. Um, I sent those out, right? Did everyone get to look those over? Did you get to look those over, Christina?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve our minutes from March seventh, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Um, is there any discussion on those? Any vote?
Christina De Oliveira, aye.
Yes, I aye.
Thank you. Um, public input. Do you have any public input? We have one public.
No.
Now they're good old tapes. All right.
No.
Um, okay, Jonathan, do you have any public input?
I don't have anything specifically. Um, I'm just gonna make a general comment, I guess, which is first of all, I'm glad for this new organization, so we're getting these people on the ground. Um, I'm really happy to honestly see this, see a couple of things that you guys work on and probably to work on, be involved with. I think that's, I'm very excited. That's great. Anything, I'll just say, here, you know, I'm not a member anymore. I'm only, I consider myself an visiting visitor. But anything that you need me to do or want me to do, um please feel free to chat. That's okay.
All right, thank you. Um, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn at five thirty four.
My second.
Yes, I aye.
Christina De Oliveira, aye.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
See you next month.
See you.